Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutville Planning Commission for Wednesday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty one. If I could have roll call.
Commissioner Wittrin.
Present.
Commissioner Wadilla. Commissioner Mamone.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Chairman Stephenson.
Here.
And Commissioner Moon.
Alternative. She's in attendance.
I here.
Thank you.
Okay, this time I'd like everyone in the building to stand, and we will do Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Wittrin will be leading us to see.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any public comment on a non-agenda item, not seeing anyone here, anyone online? Who's Oasis?
That's Keith.
He changed his name, must have hiding from somebody. All right, and no comments submitted?
Not that we've received, Mr.
All right, we'll move on to review and approval of minutes, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Commissioner Wilcox, please.
Didn't we have August twenty fifth to do? Wait a minute, okay.
September twenty second.
Okay. Looking at, never mind. When the corrections are related to the twenty fifth, anyway, September twenty second meeting minutes. Page one. Come to expect the duo of Prigga Wittrin to be the movers and the secounders, so whenever I see someone else, I question it and have to track it down on the audio. In this case, the very bottom of page one says, Mr. Wadilla moved, it should be Mr. Wittrin. Pretty good here for the recognizing voices now, which the transcripts just might be quite, might not be quite so good at, plus if we're getting a new transcription is to even more challenging for whoever that is, I'm sure. Page two. Similar correction. The near the top, the line that starts Ms. Prickett should say Mr. Wit, Commissioner Wittrin seconded rather than Wadilla. Farther down on page two. Second paragraph from the bottom. Very last line, it starts considered, considered a temporary, and in parentheses, banner, lawn, and real estate. Should be comma between banner and lawn. And the second, the last paragraph on the page, the second line from the bottom starts example is home occupations. For example, they don't require people to get land use approval to get a who, to get a home occupation. It should probably read to have a home occupation. Moving on to page three. Um, it's the small second paragraph from the bottom that starts Ms. Prickett. This Prickett asks if the provision regarding moving signs would apply to feathered signs at apartment complexes. I did a Google search, and the more common name is for the sign is feather without the ED. I did find one instance of use of the ED, but about ninety percent of the references did not have the ED, so that repeats itself in several places, so maybe that can be done as a search and change.
And just for the planning commission's benefit, when you do have the text amendment before you next month, it'll be feathered, not feathered. So it'll reflect Mr. Wilcox's comment there.
That's good to hear. Page four. And see, the very top line. This was a court ruling on signs, content of signs, the Gilbert case, I don't think case should be capitalized. And see, toward the bottom of that page, we set three more instances of the word feathered, spelled ED. Page five. Let's see, the second paragraph that starts Chair Stephenson. Chair Stephenson says he's just used to a monument sign, meaning to go through a body. Should probably read this body, meaning the planning commission. Does that sound acceptable?
What I meant by that is it could be in some municipalities, it could be council, it could be planning commission, or it could be design review. So not necessarily planning.
Oh, okay. So I guess that was, I guess we can look at that sand then. Page six. The second, second or third paragraph from the bottom, the stars, Mr. Damgen. See, the second line from the bottom of that paragraph reads, planning commission has also recently had two applications that questioned the point of whether the setback standards setback standard is not a good standard and needs to be fixed. It's reads kind of awkwardly, I think it's should probably read setback standard. Whether a setback standard is a good standard. Seven. Page eight. Paragraph at the top starts, Mr. Wilcox. Mr. Wilcox said that the physically separated duplexes didn't make any sense to him, they look like and it reads four houses that are built close together, I checked the audio on that, and it should read, look like our O U R houses that are built close together. Farther down the page, the paragraph that starts, Mr. Damgen, three lines from the bottom. Communities that have more tracts of undeveloped land. There's only a finite amount or properties, word or should be of OF. Let's sit for page eight. Page nine. See, that's the fourth paragraph from the bottom, that starts, Mr. Damgen, Mr. Damgen, so the silver lining is that middle housing includes owner occupation. Should read owner occupied. Thing on ten. Or more than I thought. Page eleven. The paragraph that starts, Mr. Wilcox. Three lines from the bottom. Meeting the minimum standards for parking and coming up short. They were being credit for the fourteen should be, or should read being given credit, word given is missing. Then the second paragraph from the bottom, that starts, Mr. Wilcox. I'll start with line above, another example is if you have a thirty five foot how height allowance, a thirty percent variance would bump it up to forty and a half feet, as soon as I said that, I knew I'd misspoken, it should, should have read forty five and a half feet. So that the transcription was accurate, but I misspoke there. It would have been ten and a half feet, thirty percent. It's the end of that one. So ready for a motion from Wittrin or Prigga?
I'm moved that we accept the minutes as amended by Commissioner Wilcox.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the meeting minutes of September twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, as corrected, are there any other corrections to those minutes? There are none, we will call the rule. Or no, I'm sorry, all, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, varies, now we're moving on to the minutes from October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Commissioner Wilcox, please.
They're hitting my button, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Second, starting on page three. The second paragraph from the bottom that starts, Mr. Damgen. The fourth line down. Requirezoning change as of August, ninety eight point seven of the units were occupied, although all of them were leased. Should say, although not all of them were leased, or actually, all of the, all of them were leased, but they weren't all occupied. That's what it is, the way it should, is the way it was presented. They were all leased, but they weren't all occupied. Let's see, the next paragraph. As they may recall, staff had found a great number of unused reserved parking on a weeknight. I didn't track this one down on the audio, but the reference to reserved. I'm questioning because the reserved are generally the spaces under carports, so many that are uncovered are generally not reserved, so I'm not sure what's, what's being referred to there, with how those were calculated.
Just the open spaces, correct, yeah.
So just open spaces in general.
Yeah, I take that as a comment that there was a number of open.
I'm not honestly sure if reserved have, has to be in there, maybe dedicated, because that, that suggests parking that was created on behalf of that development. So if I said reserved, that just might not have been the right word to use, but what I meant there was parking that is, it's not shared parking, it's not on street parking, it's parking on site for the property.
So just unused part.
Unused parking is probably fine.
Okay.
Unused parking, sounds good to me. Page four. Second full paragraph that starts, Mr. Damgen, third line from the bottom. Something that the county addressed in their conditions of approval, also there is a bus station includes proximity, I think it should read bus stop rather than bus station.
Thinking great.
Nothing on five. Page six, very top of the page on the property. As noticed in previous, as noted in previous findings, the site is significant sloping that is not typical of does of should read or OR. Very last paragraph on page six. Let's see, we can just refer to the word, the first word on the last line, improved, should be approved. Thing on the next page. Page nine. See the last full paragraph that said an applicant clarification slash rebuttal. Fourth line from the bottom starts. Premier of the property, the ones on the east side have been identified by the city's code officer is dead or dying. I don't know who you're talking about here when you refer to the city's code officer, is that a?
That would be the code compliance officer.
And it's the trees.
And it's the trees, yeah, the officer is not dead nor dying. I hope not anyway.
So that's, that's actually something that code compliance officer would be qualified to evaluate.
The code compliance officer went out on the, with the pre, prior, prior to Nugent Development acquiring the property, the code officer went out there with with a city staffer who was a trained arborist and made the determination that those trees were dead and dying. And said, code, code action would need to occur, or development approval needed to be achieved, quite frankly, so had, had council, excuse me, had the commission not approved the development, the property under Nugent Development would have been on the hook to remove those trees, they were not in sustainable shape to remain. So that action was performed, we just didn't elaborate fully on it, or, or the applicant, I should say, did not.
Okay. Next one up is on page twelve. Very last paragraph. Three lines down. And three referenced programs that Carla Properties has developed, I think that should read three referenced properties. Page fourteen. Four lines from the bottom, line starts generational households. She also mentioned that, she also mentioned that they have a policy of only one unregistered car per resident, that should read registered, not unregistered. Like then for me, thank you.
Okay, any other corrections to the minutes of October thirteenth? There are none.
Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, as amended.
My second.
There it is. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wittrin, second by Commissioner Prigga, to approve the minutes of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, as amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, that one carries. Now we're on to the main event.
Lucky you all. Okay, give us just one moment, Mr. Chair, we'll, don't really have a presentation, was going to talk largely from the packet of information that you received, so we'll walk our way through that tonight, I do have, we do have a couple of clarifying questions. So how we can best serve you guys moving forward with regard to reviewing the materials, the proposed amendments, which will be pretty substantial. So we wanted to get some clarifying questions about how you folks like to see information presented before we cut down a whole forest to provide you that information on that, so before we get going, though, I do want to pull up the memo that was in your packet just on the screen here, so give me one moment while I do that. So the memo kind of outlined what we were hoping to achieve at minimum tonight, and depending on the group's appetite, we can do a little bit more. But the first thing we wanted to do was confirm calendar dates, since this is going to be a rolling conversation. Staff has identified three dates, at least tentative ways that we think could work well. In addition to tonight's discussion, as far as getting this this amendment draft created, so we are looking for confirmation from commissioners that they are available on the January twenty sixth, February twenty third, and then the, the critical one would be April thirteenth, which is when we're forecasting a potential hearing on this text amendment to occur. Those, the two dates in January and February are special meeting dates, those would be the fourth Wednesdays of the month, so it's not an out of the, out of ordinary situation, we've had a slew of special meetings this fall, as you all are well aware. We're leaving the regular meeting times in January and February for prospective hearings, and we do know that we'll have a couple in your docket, potentially in January and potentially in February, so that's why we're suggesting focusing hearings on one night, then two weeks later returning to this topic. So unless there's any issues or calendar conflicts, that's the staff proposal for the calendar, and I'll open it up to you, Mr. Chair, for any questions or comments from the commission on those dates.
Okay, any conflicts from anyone?
Good here, Chair.
Mr. Chair, I stated the obvious, not at this point, but you know April thirteen is a bit of time down the road, you never know what happened, but at this point, this seems like standard procedural meetings, and I'm fine with it, but you never know.
April thirteenth is not a budget meeting.
Budget would meet the following week, I believe, let me double check that, though, April's a busy busy month on the city, city meeting docket, the budgets committee would meet on the eighteenth and the twentieth, and I think we have two or three members on this committee, or on this commission, also on the budget committee.
Lucky them.
Lucky them, so eighteenth and the twentieth, I believe, are currently the budget committee.
Okay.
Meetings.
All right, so Commissioner Ramone is right, it's, it's a ways down the road, but we'll plan for it, okay?
The thirteenth would be our regular meeting day.
Are you, thirteenth would just be our regular meeting. That would be your regular meeting day.
That would be the, the hearing, so that'd be a little frisky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that also allows then, if there is a continuation, and have that in your second meeting in April, if need be, also it gives some, some buffer for council to navigate the issue too in May. We do know the changes have to be in fact by the end of June, so that's why we're tracking on those calendar dates.
This is Commissioner Allen, these dates work for me.
Cricket.
I have them in my calendar.
All right. Good to go.
All right. Okay, second item there is to review for perspective structural changes to the development code to better accompany the required amendments, and what we want to do there is, I'm going to skip past the PowerPoint slide there, that was again the slideshow we gave you at our last time we discussed this item, so that was just a refresher on what, what it is we're talking about, this is the section where we're talking about structural changes to the development code. This obviously is not the substance of it, but it is important to talk about structure, because there are a few, this, this the required code amendments that are going to come from the state that, that are derived from the model code do affect several chapters, and it's going to be important for us as we start developing drafts for this body to review, to know that there's general concurrence with how we're intending to place the model code or sprinkle it across the development code, what we don't want to do is a fundamental redo of the code itself, nor do we just simply want to create a new chapter for middle housing, we think it's going to be better served within our existing framework, so this page just shows kind of where we're proposing to make those changes. Starting with chapter one, we have a whole section for definitions, you may recall when we did the MU three, the mixed use zoning district earlier this year, we added a bunch of definitions to that section, some of those definitions that are currently in the model, in, in the model code from the House Call two thousand and one are a copy paste version of what we put in the MU three, so half the work of the updating definition section, it's already been done earlier this summer, there are a few additional definitions that have to be inserted in there, so that section would be affected. Section, excuse me, chapter three is where we'll see a lot of red ink. What we're proposing, and this is also going to, while, again, while the impetus of this change may not necessarily be desired by the city, this change does allow for in our mind, a more user friendly experience to find certain information, and that is to create a use table for the residential zoning districts, and what I mean by that, let me pull up an example from what we did with the mixed use zoning district, you may recall this table here on the screen. So we did that in the mixed use section. And our intent would be those columns here where you see MU three, we would basically have columns for the zoning districts, and then each of these rows indicate the residential uses, so it's just a very quick and easy way for staff, for users of the document to be able to find out the information on whether something is permitted, conditional, has special standards, which middle housing typologies will, and then where to find them in the code. Additionally, what we're going to try to do when we publish the code after these amendments go, and in fact, are to create hyperlinks in here, so if you're viewing the code online, you can simply click to that section in the code and go immediately to the page that you're looking, that you need to have the relevant information for, so we think that this is a way to ease the use of the, of the code.
So those will all be catalogued by section.
Correct. Go back to the memo here.
So since we don't like it, that's supposed to help ease the
It's, it's distraction, yes, but it is, you know, it is a net positive, it's been something that we've been trying to consider, and this might be the opportunity to do it, rather than just have an independent amendment on that. So as you see right here, these are the prospective zoning districts that we believe are going to see the changes, we talked about that the last time we discussed this matter. All of our current single family, or at least titled, single family residential districts, as well as the attached residential, and then those commercial districts, which do allow for single family dwellings also are going to be affected as well, so those are neighborhood, commercial, and mixed office housing. Those are going to be sections where we see amendments, we're going to talk more about the structure within each of these sections here, because there is some repetition of it, but we'll, we'll discuss how those sections may or may not be impacted here momentarily. Chapter five is a miscellaneous standard section in the code, the one that is going to be affected is one that several members of this commission are pretty familiar with, because we had to edit it. because of another state law several years ago. And that is the ADU or the accessory dwelling unit section. House Bill two thousand and one, in addition to creating middle standard, middle housing standard sections, basically told cities like ours, and many cities across the state, I should add, that you can no longer prohibit, or you can no longer require off-street parking or owner occupancy requirements for ADUs. That was something that we had locally inserted. Should add, a number of cities did that as well. The state has come back and said, those are no longer allowed. So those will have, those references and standards for ADUs will have to be removed.
Was there wisdom in that?
You'll have to ask your state representatives on that. I'm not going to take a guess on that.
So why don't you just ask them to write the
What's that?
Basically, that's what they're doing.
Did you catch that? Could you repeat that, Commissioner Prickett?
Um, I don't understand why they don't just write the code and tell us that's what we have to put in it.
That's basically what the is. That's, that's our starting point. We have certain leverage here and there, but House Bill two thousand and one was explicit that that was not one that we could tinker with.
Yeah, we're really not smart enough to write code, and neither staff is kind of what it comes down to. And neither's Metro. So the states kind of figured out that they can do it best.
The biggest change to House Bill to, that this amendment will carry will be to chapter eight, which currently is our, we call it the site orientation and design section. That's gonna be a little bit more of a breakdown here on the next page. Before I go into that, are there any questions about chapters one, three, or five? As far as where the affected sections are, again, we're gonna go into a little bit more of a drill down on one of these section threes as an example of where we see the perspective changes occurring.
So this is gonna create more middle housing, right?
I don't think that's the way I would characterize it, I think.
But that's their goal.
The state thinks that it's gonna create more middle house.
The state believes that development codes at the local level do not allow for it sufficiently.
And I'm just wondering, I'm looking at these changes, I'm trying to figure out, at the end of the day, how we're gonna have more middle housing in Troutdale by implementing the standards.
Well, it's, it's one thing to, to have the market enticement to do it. It's another thing for a jurisdiction to prohibit it. And that's what they're saying jurisdictions can no longer prohibit it. Again, I'm not gonna be the translator for what the state believes it can do, but what we've heard at least is that part of the reason, according to the state, why we have housing issues the way we do, is that for seventy-plus years, the development patterns in the state have by and large excluded the possibility of middle housing. For better or worse. And in this case, they believe that middle housing is less disruptive than, than other types of housing that could be suggested otherwise. I'm not here to offer qualified opinions or the debate you folks.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to debate you, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to understand this, because when a citizen comes up and asks, I'd just like to be able to say something other than I have no idea. Call Salem. Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would remind the commission to, some of you were on the commission at the time, we had a presentation several years ago about middle housing and, and, and kind of why it's seen, or why I guess it was ultimately pursued as a potential way to generate more housing opportunity. Whether or not that actually happens is a whole nother story.
Right. I'm just trying to say, I, I'm trying to understand how changing the code's going to get us middle housing. I think it may get us more market housing of different types.
Well, mark, middle housing can be market housing. There's not, it's not, it's not income restricted or anything.
Okay.
Middle housing is a typology. It has really nothing to do with the affordability or the eligibility of somebody to reside there.
So it can be higher in than just called middle housing?
Well, for instance, townhomes are middle housing. The townhomes that are in downtown at Discovery Block are selling for just under half a million dollars. That's certainly not affordable housing by any definition in this community. That's middle housing. But of course, that was a property in a development designed with middle housing intended. What's different here is basically looking at a significant portion of our city, which is zone right now, single family, that always had the expectation of detached, single-family dwellings. And what we're saying, or what the state is saying, is that because of how we intend to develop as a state, that because so much of our land is reserved exclusively for single-family detached, it prohibits or prevents opportunities to develop additional housing typologies in areas where growth should be concentrated.
Right.
Again, that is a philosophy, and that is an approach that the state has adopted, and that's why it's in front of us that way.
No discussion about moving the urban growth boundary? Okay.
Chris?
I'm not arguing with you.
I think Commissioner Wilcox had questions.
Yes, Commissioner Wilcox?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment, it sounds like what Chris is describing is the intent is increased density rather than that seems to be the main goal, I'd say, especially with the, one good example is the allowing ADUs. You know, you're adding them to existing properties, you're not taking in, taking up any more land space, the same, same case with townhomes and duplexes versus single families using up less overall, you know, ground area.
Yeah, you, you could, you could probably suggest that that's probably the case. It seems like when we, we as, as planning professionals who also advocated to the state not to take the full brunt of this law as it's written, because there are very few planners in the state outside of the city of Portland that frankly are in support of this. First off, it's, it's an abdication of local control, which is already problematic, but that's beside the point. It's law now, but the thing of the, the fact of the matter is the planners did get certain things in the law that you'll see as we dive into it a little bit more, one of which is a huge consideration for cities is the ability to provide services. It's great if you want to densify, but if you don't have the infrastructure to support the densification of areas, if you, if, for instance, if you're in a neighborhood and your neighborhood is served by a six-inch water line or a six-inch sewer line, and now all of a sudden the zoning allows for development of up to four or five times the, the density capacity that the sewer or water system anticipated, you have a problem.
Yeah.
So what we were able to, as professionals and through advocacy, was able to say, okay, maybe you can do duplexes and not have any further action required. Duplexes are, have to be treated like single family, but if you wanted to do, say, a triplex, a quadplex, or a townhome, or something like that, if you really wanted to densify this neighborhood, there has to be adequate capacity established. In other words, the applicant has to demonstrate that, that their development does not have a negligible impact on the system. And for a built-out community like ours, or largely built-out communities like ours, in, in that case, we're actually pretty well protected, because the neighborhoods that we have established presume a certain type of density. So unless there's a significant capital expenditure that the applicants would be responsible for, let alone the ability for the city to do that capital investment. In staff's estimation, I mean, just because you're opening up the floodgates potentially for denser development, doesn't mean it's going to happen. There are significant market considerations, but more importantly, infrastructural considerations that probably are not going to lead to every single-family home being turned into a fourplex. Where we see, maybe where we're, we're gonna probably head toward is perhaps duplex conversion, of which we already have a lot of duplexes around the city. And I think, you know, for any properties that are zoned, single-family residential that don't have that don't have development or are so-called underdeveloped properties, we may see applications for denser development there, but then at least the infrastructure can be planned accordingly. And because it's virgin or underdeveloped ground, it's probably better understood that, okay, this development might occur. But again, those properties, if you look citywide, are not as prevalent as, as we may think. This, this rule, I don't want to negate the impacts to the city of Troutdale, but, but this law more specifically impacts the Happy Valleys and the Hillsboroughs of the world that have ample room to grow, that thought maybe they were just gonna do quarter acre lots. Mm-mm. No, because the builders that want to come in now see the ability to have denser development, higher return on investment, so they're gonna pursue that type of development first before the single-family lots that they might have maybe typically gone for. Those are the communities that frankly, in our estimation, are gonna be more impacted by the change to state law. Not saying we won't. But I'm saying we have certain situations and, and parameters of how we've already developed that probably will minimize the impact. That's, that's an opinion. But infrastructure don't lie, and, you know, there's only gonna be so much appetite to upsize pipes. If not, the rest of the neighborhood is responsible, and cities are able to, to make it happen.
Kind of a rack and stack mentality.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Wilcox, I took your question and expanded on to it a little bit more, but I think that was gonna be an important thing we had to bring up at some point, was our analysis of the situation. The next page, diving into kind of an example of how chapter three, a chapter three section will lay out. We have a zoning district identified, so three, and just looking at one, for instance, three point oh two oh, for instance, is the R ten zoning district. How we would intend to lay it out, which is not that drastically different from how it's currently laid out today, we have a purpose statement. Why, why is this district established? What is its served purpose? What is the permitted uses? Historically, we would list from A through L, or A through X, or whatever many, we would have uses that were allowed in this said zoning district. What we would do then, instead of having an A through X list, we would have a permit, we would have a reference to say, check out this table earlier on in this entire chapter, you'll find what you're looking for there. There'll be a section in there that says about other uses. And basically, there would be form language that would suggest the develop, the development director has certain latitudes to determine use. And if there are disagreements with the director's interpretation on it, they can always be appealed to planning commission to be arbitled. The next section would be specific use standards. These would be standards from other chapters or sections, so those would be more reference-based. And then there would be a section for dimensional standards, which generally refer to density setbacks and building height, the typical performance standards that you typically see as a body when we're talking about a variance request or so forth. So those dimensional standards would be laid out there. Not much truly changes with the general breakdown of how, how these zoning district sections will look like, other than it will look a little bit thinner, because we're taking out those permitted uses and putting them into a table where they can be easily cross-referenced with the other zoning districts, so it'll look different. So that's kind of the cleanup element of what we're talking about, less so the substantive changes that you'll see in chapter eight. Chapter eight is where we'll see probably the biggest changes, as well as the expansion. So this is where a good chunk of the model code, which we had sent over in the last discussion, we'll go to. Right now, we use chapter eight as a general development standard chapter. So if you're bringing in new development, or you're rapidly expanding developments, or changing it up, you have certain development criteria and expectations, whether it be oh, help me out of here, what kind of things we have in chapter eight?
Certain design standards, like multifamily, you have to have three out of four
Yeah.
designs for your windows or stuff like that.
Yeah, minimum lot size, access to transit, interior walkways, things of that nature. Right now, single-family, if, if I'm building a single-family detached home, those type of standards are actually residing in the zoning district. What we're proposing here in eight point two zero zero is a consolidation of all residential design standards, whether they be from the model code, which applies from duplexes, triplexes, quads, townhomes, and cottage clusters. They apply to single-family dwellings, which, in which case we basically say, your house has to have dormers, windows, certain things like that. Or more aggressively, multifamily developments, which is the types of things you were looking at at the last application you all had last month with Fox Ridge, where you're looking at the performance standards as far as how much active recreation space you have. This just creates a consolidated section within this overall chapter to look for residential design standards. So it is an equal part cleaner structure for, for the code, but it also provides an easy landing spot for the model code that we're gonna have to adopt. And any prospective changes that we may want to have locally. So again, the model code is what our base model is. If you folks want to make changes to certain things in the model code, if you want to require certain things that are above and beyond, the state will give you some flexibility to do that. It'll find its way in chapter eight, is what we're saying. The one critical thing that you'll have to know, though, is this. You cannot, you cannot be overly you, you cannot deliberately or overtly give more design standard requirements for middle housing than you would for single-family detached. So for instance, if you, if you I'm just gonna play a random thing, not that you would do it. If you mandated that all middle housing had to be painted pink, it's a clear and objective standard. That same standard would have to apply, apply for a single-family detached home. You cannot create a unique standard apart from something that's structural, say like a firewall between a, a townhome or a cottage cluster arrangement. You cannot create too unique a standard that it, it, it is signifying a dissuading of allowing middle housing to be built.
Basically shown bias.
Bingo. You can create clear and objective standards. You have, cities have rights to do that, but they have to be evenly applied. One of the issues we have right now with our current code is we lump together duplexes, triplexes, quads, along in with multifamily housing. Basically, everything but single-family houses have unique design standards. That's not to say single-family homes don't. The problem is that we've grouped middle housing in with multifamily housing as opposed to grouping it with single-family detached housing. That paradigm shifts. You can maintain multifamily residential design standards. Nobody's saying you have to get rid of those. But you can't force a triplex to have the same standard that you would in apartment building.
And Chris, he is going to be the arm that's going to determine if the code is acceptable.
Well, we'll write, we'll write it. It has to pass their test, yes. That, again, that's not to say we can't have standards for triplexes. It's just saying that you have to evenly apply it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilcox, I think.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Uh, yeah, I had a question about about working backwards from the um, middle housing standards to the detached, single-family. What, what I have in mind exactly is, um, so you have a triplex or a townhouse where the, the ones in the middle only have windows on two sides, two exterior walls.
Right.
So. So. Could a single family home builder then say, well, I only have to do windows on two walls?
Well, that's that's where there is some latitude and believe it or not, common sense is applied, you you couldn't do that.
In their stuff?
In their stuff, yes, so with duplexes, for instance, if you're doing a duplex, whether you're dividing it in half or dividing it top floor or bottom floor. They're basically saying the the general architectural standards in this case that you would have for a single family home would apply, because a duplex presumably. You would have windows on multiple sides, if you had a situation with a townhome, for instance, and you're a middle unit in a townhome row. Yeah, you're not going to have windows on the side.
We could, it'd just be unique.
It would be rather unique and the fire marshal wouldn't like it, but you know, that's actually one of the problems we have currently with the code we have right now. See, for instance. Right now, with townhome design. Townhome design is virtually the same as multifamily residential design, well, we have it in that section. That for after forty feet of a facade, you have to jog the building in and out for feet for for building articulation, so you're not creating this Soviet style flat. Flat boring construction, you you can't articulate a townhouse that is basically on a zero lot line. Nobody articulates townhomes on the sides, so already we have a standard that frankly doesn't work. And and so there's going to be some acknowledgement, there's going to be some fixing of what we have in our code. Regardless of Houseville 2001 or not, so this provides again, the opportunity for us to delineate that.
I don't know that 2001 is the magic bullet, but I'm sure there's some good to it.
We just recorded it.
Correct me.
We just recorded that. He's on the record for saying there might be some.
I said Mike.
The the last thing I wanted to point out here before I'll turn it over to any questions, we have a section, kind of a placeholder section. For mixed use standards. And while this isn't necessarily applicable to Houseville 2001, one of the other code amendments we have running in the background is the suggestions from the Halsey, Main Streets on Halsey Code Audit. Which included potential changes or updates to the central business district design standards. Right now, it's floating around in an appendix in the development code, if we're going to kind of structure chapter eight into a general design and. A development and design standard section. That would be the staff request is that we basically move appendix A into that section 8.300. And that some of those standards could then be looked at at a future time. So with that, Mr.
The ones that are in appendix A now.
Currently, but at some point, we will need to look and consider those changes that were suggested. From the Halsey audit.
Yeah. And and some of those I remember were pretty good, some of them were pretty. Intense.
Right. Right. But we were also waiting to see if there was any further action from the state as far as any future. Changes to state law that could. Either supplant or completely eradicate some of that work, so before we go down that rabbit hole, in the meantime, we just wanted to put that placeholder there for that, so that's what that section is.
All right.
And with that, I'll yield back for any questions.
Any comments, questions? No. You guys loving it?
Loving it is a strong word. So the final clarification, it wasn't necessarily bullet point in your list, Mr. Chair, but this is more for the committee commission's benefit, you're going to get a lot of information. We wanted to figure out the best way to provide you that information, certainly, we can do paper copies, because a lot of you like to jot. Even though we're in a virtual world, I I know I still like to have printouts when I'm doing work like this, so we can definitely supply copies of whatever you need, but before we cut forests down. Again, we're dealing with a lot of moving and replacing of sections, we're inserting sections, we wanted to get an idea of what your comfort level is in viewing documents. A lot of you or some of you have indicated, you know, a typical red line approach of striking through and then replacing could be desired. You're going to see a lot of red lines, you might be seeing red beyond what your your initial feelings of this this code amendment will be. Staff had another proposal, we wanted to show you potentially to see if that might be helpful too, it's kind of a two parter. One would be to, and this is in particular for the model code here. Can everyone see that okay? Taking the model code, which we know is is, dare I say, a clean document. And providing little annotations here as far as where. We are anticipating sticking that prevailing section into the new code layout, so those, when you see like duplexes, for instance. This would be in reference to TDC 8.220, that would then refer you to a clean document. That shows the hypothetical draft of the new layout and basically would take the model code language and put it into a clean drafts document. That's one approach, because that way you can clearly see that we've copied and pasted the model code. Where we think it needs to go physically within the in the code, and then if you want to make edits to that, then you can redline that clean version. Of of how you get there. As far as the existing code and how you can do it, you might want to consider a color coordinated system. So you can see then which sections of the code might be subject to change. So for instance, here. Yellow would be potentially suggested edits from staff, purple would be sections that you know are going to need to change. And color coordinating the code, so you can understand the visual impact and the structural impact that you'll have in the code. And that is with the existing code. But our fear is that if we're going to try to do a traditional redlining of your existing code, you're going to run into a lot. Of red ink and then potentially green ink, and it might be difficult to track, so since we're talking about a really the redevelopment of a of a of a chapter. We wanted to see if that option would be preferable, or if there's another idea on how to see these edits take take shape.
Well, I I don't like burning up a lot of ink, but. It is good to see everything that's changing. You know, like, I I really like where you lined out. What would be your changes and what would be coming from the SS of Salem.
Right.
So we can kind of tell those apart. How do you guys feel? I know you like hard copies.
And we're prepared to to give them to you as soon as December 10th, or we can mail them out, so we don't have to wait until the January discussion to. To initiate that, we can give this well in advance to you all, but we wanted to see what format you wanted to do first.
This is Commissioner Allen. Chair Stephenson, I would I would agree with what you're saying there.
Okay. Commissioner Prickett.
It doesn't matter whichever way the commission wants to see it, it doesn't matter to me.
Just a listening check, though, are you in fear that we're going to get a hard copy and then that copy might change some more? Before we have a chance to review it more, or do you think the hard copy is actually going to be? A legitimate. Version of what you feel, because I know things have been sent out in the past and then they've made changes or edits before we actually get to meeting time.
So I would say is. For for your discussion, your first discussion in January, the hard copy we would send out would be your starting point.
Okay.
And it would be based on the model code. Copy paste it without any sort of staff amendments to the model code. So we would, we would show the model, we would still give you the model code as the state formatted it and provide you that reference. So where you can then look at it in the clean draft of what we think your your draft will be as a starting point. And then from that clean draft, as you have discussions and you're like, you know what, we need to add add this. As a local option beyond what the state may need, or we want to see if there's wiggle room and we can get around the state requirement or suggestion. Then we track the changes of that clean draft, all the while, we can still show you the visual impact of what it does to the current code. But it's going to be easier for us as a staff. To show those red lines, once we have a finished product of what the draft may ultimately be as far as what your proposed changes are, that's the time for us as a staff, it's going to be easier to depth, to show where those red lines are. But as you're working for this new draft, we think that clean draft copy with the model code inserted with those references is your your best way to go, because we think you'll be making changes to that. So you have a working draft.
Yeah.
You'll have red lines to that working draft, once you guys are ready to tee it off with that and we get to an application, you'll also have the red, the traditional red lines that you would see. With our development code, our current development code.
So you're going to show the existing code. Red line.
We'll show the existing code highlighted with what changes Salem is requiring, which changes staff would suggest. As you continue your conversation, if there are other sections or other things that change, then we would update that, so we'd have a parallel of the current versus the prospective code.
Okay.
Run it together. But that way, it's just for us to track changes as a staff, it's going to be much easier and for you all to read them and review them. Then to bounce back and forth between the old code and just try to make sense of one version.
But I agree, I think we do need a hard copy.
You guys okay with that? It's a hard copy, okay.
Okay, so we will aim to have the hard copy ready for you by the time of your. Your December meeting. And. I think we'll we'll be able to get there with that, we're not sensing any, we know there won't be any additional changes to what the state's requiring. So it should be your starting point, basically. Another thing that staff is working on, particularly Alex and Amber, we are also trying to do a inventory. Of all these subdivisions, all ninety-eight of the subdivisions in the city. To see if we are able to determine if certain subdivisions. Are exempted from this law. Because as we talked about the first time. If a subdivision's CCNRs, if their covenants specifically make reference that the only type of development allowed within the subdivision or certain sections of the subdivision are detached, single family. And those covenants were in place prior to the passage of the state law, then those subdivisions are exempt. From the state law, case in point, I think one of them's Old Sweetbrier Home. Old Sweetbrier Farm, so Commissioner Mamoney, I think you live there, we were able to find the CCNRs for that subdivision and it clearly states. Only detached, single family homes are allowed to be developed in there, and Old Sweetbrier Farm was established in the nineteen seventies. Based on our understanding of the state law, that means any, most properties unless they were specifically called out. Are exempted from this requirement, they can only develop detached, single family. So what we're hoping to do ideally before the January meeting is to have, in addition to all of. The subdivision work that you have to do, we hope to have an exhibit or a map showing. Which areas of the city, even if there's own, single family residential are exempt from the rule. Because there are a few, but not all, so that's what we're trying to find out, and it's just a lot of file digging. Research, and I want to thank in particular Alex and Amber for for doing that, because that's a whale of an effort and will require county record diving on that. But we're also doing that work, because that's frankly, part of the. Knowledge that the public will need to have, particularly city council, is that, yes, these changes are in effect, they affect. Huge swaths of single family residential development in the city, but not all neighborhoods are actually affected. So we'll we'll hope to have an update for you all on that as we continue our research on that. Were there any other items related to this, Mr. Chair, that you wanted to touch base on tonight?
Not necessarily. Not all that far from the model code.
I guess that that would be one other thing to to make note of. Nothing technically precludes any member of the planning commission from approaching staff or having questions of the staff. While we work through this process outside of the hearings or outside of the workshops and certainly outside of the hearings, so if there are questions or comments. Or thoughts on the model code, potential changes we can make. We certainly are welcome, we certainly welcome any dialogue with you all, we would probably defer most of it to meetings, but if we have an idea on. Particular pinch points or heartburn beyond just the overall law itself, but if there's really something that we want to focus on. The earlier we know about it, the better we can structure the meeting around it, so please do take a look at the model code again, we'll provide you all another copy here shortly with. With the text amendment draft. And then we'll continue to work on it into the new year.
Anyone have anything?
Sure, I would just say that I don't think any of us likes the state telling us what to do or forcing it down our throats. But we all just get out the best positive outlook we can and try to make the best of it and do what's the best for our city that we can. With what we're getting dealt with.
Oh, and I and I I think we will, I think we just. We've got to be really thorough, which we usually are as we go through this, because. You know, frankly, if I look at a lot of the development and the policies that you're seeing in Portland right now. I don't find many people out here to think that they're that, you know, really great idea. And. So I think we just, you know, we'll manage it. As best we can, it's just disappointing. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, Chair Stephenson.
Hey, Commissioner Wilcox.
I just want to make a comment regarding duplexes, since they're, they appear to be. Allowed outright in the single family detached districts. I I know for a fact that you're not all not all duplexes or rentals, some are owner occupied and multi generational, so it's a. Just wanted to make that point, thank you.
Anyone else have any points? Okay, so you want us to go through this?
We will, you know, there there wasn't too much homework from tonight, you you should have had in a previous pack at the middle, at the middle housing code, will, we can send it back to you all again. That was short, I'm sorry, I was looking at Alex thinking he was holding me something up. But look for, look for our edits no later than your December. Meeting, even though we're not going to talk about it at the December meeting, we'll have have it ready for you, so it'll be nice holiday reading for you all. In the most festive sense.
All right. Okay, let's move along.
From a department report perspective, we are closed tomorrow for Veterans Day, or call it my wife's birthday. Convenient, but thank you again to all the veterans who serve or. Serve our country, so we honor them. We are also, of course, closed on Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. And your next meeting will be on December the eighth, and we are going to have two. Develops, two development code amendments, actually, one is the fence standards that we have talked about, the other are the standards to design code that we are making those those edits that we talked about earlier. The other are the standards to design code, uh, that we are making those, those edits that we talked about earlier tonight in the rehash in the minutes conversation. So those will be.
So it's our first hearing on those?
It'll be your hearings for both the fencing standards as well as the sign standards. Those will then go to council in January for adoption.
Okay.
Um, also mentioned at the top, we are expecting a couple of hearings in January. Uh, one will, uh, actually both potentially conditional use uh, options. Um, they're still subject to change, so they may not be held in January. They might be closer to February. One of which, and I will encourage, if you can, please not to discuss the topic since it will become presumptive. One of the conditional use applications will involve the old city hall property. Uh, we're not at full liberty right now to disclose the use of it. Uh, we do have a pre-application with the applicant. The one thing we can say is the applicant is demonstrating an interest to keep the look and facade and feel of the building and to try to preserve the building if possible. But it will not be for a civic use, it would be for a commercial use. Um, but the commercial use may have a component which may trigger a conditional use. So that's why we're anticipating having a hearing on that. While that is happening, the city council, which recently in September declared the city, the old city hall property surplus is going to be potentially working with said applicant, uh, as well as other interested parties to see about disposing of the old city hall site. Um, so nothing is set in stone necessarily, but if there are questions or concerns about that property, please don't speculate. Again, it could be, could be becoming before you. And because it may or will ultimately involve a city council decision on who to transact with, even if it's not the applicant you have, just please be mindful and uh, not to engage in full conversation in a public setting about merits or demerits of, of this application or the city hall property. So just, just be aware that you might, you might find yourself in a conflict of interest if you do. Uh, this is obviously a property that has had a long history, a political history. So we just want to be mindful of that. But you may have some action and the city in general may have some action on that site very soon.
And do you know if the council's planning on controlling some of the uses through deed restrictions?
I don't know about the uses, but I think there's certainly an appetite on council to try to maintain the um, historic nature of, or the historic qualities of, of the building. I think there's a preference to try to keep it if possible.
And that'd be a great way to do it.
So anyway, if you hear anything, just keep it down low. You will likely have an action before you pretty soon on that.
Okay. It's good news.
Perspective, like, yeah, we'll have to see. Um, a couple of other projects to be aware of, um, the uh, Parks Master Plan is, is finishing up its public engagement efforts. Um, I suspect there will be probably some opportunity for additional comment on that as the consultants work their way through those responses and come up with some draft ideas. Uh, we'll let your group know if and when those opportunities happen, but that's largely Parks Master Plan um, project. City's also going to be working on an update to its transportation system plan. That is the goal twelve in the cop plan. That is a, the main transportation planning document that the city has. Um, I would expect that this body will probably get a chance to look at it uh, come May. So right on the heels of Houseville two thousand one. One thing that I would ask the chair, if we can put on the December agenda is to consider whether or not a couple of members of this body should be part of a feedback loop, if you will, for the consultants while they make their, their updates to the TSP. So if we can add that for December agenda, I'd have her consideration. We'd like to do that. Um, then related to that, the city will internally be working on an update to the capital improvement uh, plan, which speaks basically for itself. It's a list of uh, projects the city has identified that it wants to apply, city or SDC or.
Has it been through years already? Has it been three years?
It's been five years since you last updated it. Um, so there's an update to that document too. So there's going to be a lot of long range planning here in the next six to twelve months. A lot of which this body will be involved with or actually have to say in steering. So be prepared, twenty twenty-two will be more than just Salem uh, ruining your development code. It will also involve a lot of internal projects that have a lot of good cons good uh, potential impacts for the city as well.
So with the uh, capital improvement plan being updated, will we be updating the public facilities plan too?
To be determined. I think what we're looking at is more narrowly a transportation focused update to look at the town center plan projects and looking at potentially rolling them in. Um, Alex, do we have anything else you want to mention? So probably more than enough for right now. We'll be busy throughout the holidays. Um, have a happy Thanksgiving to everyone and thank you to all the veterans.
Okay, Commissioner Allen, anything?
Uh, no, skip.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ramone?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Prickett?
I think she just dropped off the corporation. She's coming back on the.
Uh, Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing more.
Uh, Commissioner Prickett, anything for the, the order?
Yeah, um, I have one thing. The car that's, uh, that, that has been like in an accident up across from the high school is still sitting in that lot. Is there a reason why it's still sitting there?
Uh, it is subject, I believe, to police investigation.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Because it's been there a while.
It, it has. It, it's not going to be a permanent fixture.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Other than that, happy Veterans Day to all you veterans and then, well, thank you for serving.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Whitaker?
Uh, the only thing I'd have is we finally had our first public safety and equity meeting. And uh, I think we are, it's going to take a little bit to find our purpose, our voice, what's going on. So but if anybody's hearing anything or wants to add anything from the community, or if any commissioners have any feedback for me to take to that committee, I'm all ears. So feel free to give me feedback.
Uh, and with that, I would like to uh, wish all the veterans uh, happy Veterans Day and thank you for your service to our country. Wish everyone a great and happy Thanksgiving this year. And uh, thank you for all your work on this. This is a tough lift for, for staff, I know. So thank you for, for all the work. Okay, and I'd like to thank everyone for the discussion and the time with the meeting tonight. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I think motion to adjourn the meeting for November tenth, two thousand twenty.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.